Commissioner Creaker.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Almody.
Here.
Commissioner Pennin.
Here.
Commissioner Getzel.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Chairman Nevers.
Here. I would like to. But allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation, God, in this world with justice for all. Hey, I think everybody probably knows that. And then, uh. Consider, consider agenda here. Any comments, changes, requests for admission?
Who's the?
Second, on favor.
Hi.
Okay. For comment, anyone wishing, anyone wishing to address the commission on matters of up hearing on the agenda may do so now. Uh, the public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by the commission. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes free speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. Right? So you know. Report individuals. Anybody have questions? Comments? Okay.
Um, so I'm not sure if they reported the permanent going stock with me on the line. Gaylord. I think it's going to happen.
When there's a stop work, it means the work was being done without permits.
That's what I thought.
Yes, and they did get permits. And that's why it's on the list.
Okay. And then I see that it looks like enough we did another request that we have more than here coming forward dreams being used. Then have been accepted.
On this list?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that in total?
They're in progress.
Yeah.
Those are not our total.
But the numbers. It's total of three of this year so far.
There's also a G.
There's a G or A D.
But whatever is the G D.
Yeah, which is telling that one now.
We'd like to provide you with a list of A Ds if you'd like us to.
That would be very helpful. That would be very helpful.
You're welcome. These are two ones that are still in progress.
They're in progress. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Any one more than five? Well, we were just. Can I put this thing season and up one day one? Okay, no, there's no old business, so we move on to new business. So we're tasked with considering the fuel denial for a short term rental license to after the renewal at three Los Encinos. And I'd just like to make a comment about since this is something a little different than we usually do. Uh, just a comment about how I think we'll go forward with this. Uh, I'll have the city manager speak to the denial. Um, and come back to the commissioners for question for clarification only. Um, then we'll have the, um, the count speak their, uh, to their, um, appeal. Um, we'll come back to the mission and we'll just ask some questions for clarification. But I'll do comment and I'll ask for, ask for comments from commissioners entering motion. Uh, we'll open the commission to discuss it further and then we'll call for a vote. Okay? Um, so, um, yeah, the city manager, um. Address this one.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. So, uh, don't take any pleasure in being here on this, but this is what you have in front of you today. Uh, and so I'm here to present the case for deny denial of the appeal, uh, of the, uh, that was filed by the applicant for the property in three Los Encinos Drive. Um, this property which the applicant, I believe, leases from their mother-in-law or somebody in the family, uh, for short-term rental purposes. Um, as over the years has repeatedly been in violation of our municipal code, uh, a couple codes. The building official is here to answer any technical questions that you might have relative to building codes that they've been in violation of. Um, but, uh, the basis for the denial of the application was based on our short-term rental code, which is, uh, chapter five point two four point zero six zero. Uh, which gives six categories of reasons why the city manager can deny an application from an applicant. Um, so, uh, there's three primary findings, three areas out of the six where they're, uh, they're in violation. Uh, so a couple of them continue violation and so that's the basis of, uh, the denial for the application. Uh, the first one, the simple one, uh, it, you know, the. When you all in the city council and the community came up with a plan for allowing short-term rentals. You know, we wanted to have a structure for that and have guidelines and have a way for enforcing and a way for policing and making sure that the businesses were operating effectively. And that it was not going to be a nuisance for the community, there were no public safety issues. So that's why we had these guidelines, one of them was the application process. Uh, and the application process needs to be renewed annually. That was decided by you all and then by the city council and then by the, uh, the community. Um, in order to have that renewal process so that every year staff knows who, uh, is operating the businesses, that there's an emergency plan in place, that there's a nuisance abatement plan in place. And who's operating it, who's the contact person? So if we get complaints from the community, they can be responded to quickly. Um, so if it might be an inconvenience for the product, for the business owner or the property owners, but there's a reason for it. And so we expect a full, uh, application to be submitted. And yeah, it might be a little redundant and it might just be rehashing the same information for a lot of them, but things do change and a lot of them use property manager. And so sometimes that contact information changes. And so the only way for staff to be aware of that is annually when we get that renewal. So, so that's why it's the first. Reason I can deny an application is if an application is incomplete. In this case, we never received an applicator and we didn't receive an application at the time that we sent the letter. We just received a check for renewal. So that's the first, the first one. And it seems insignificant, insignificant face value, but certainly not as important for staff and for the community. Uh, the second is misrepresentation of the property. And that's been an ongoing, uh, an ongoing issue. So the, the applicant, uh, has misrepresented the configuration of the property. Uh, specifically in two thousand and ten, when they purchased the property, uh, Mr. Edley did a property inspection. And there was, uh, downstairs area that had a furnace and has a furnace and a water heater. Um, and so that was pointed out in his inspection that that area cannot be used as a sleeping quarters, uh, for taking shoes. And it over the, over the years, it's been, the house is a three-bedroom house. By code, uh, because those two sleeping areas are permitted. And they, at least to my knowledge, the applicants have not come in and done any, have not applied for any permits to mitigate. That sleeping area to mitigate the issue with the furnace and the water heater. So I have to assume that nothing's changed. And so those are still areas that can't be used as, as sleeping areas. Uh, but the applicants have continued to, uh, frequently list the part of the business as a five bedroom. So when we notice, when we notify them of that, it turned back to three bedrooms. And then later when we go back and look at their listings again, it's back to five bedrooms. So that's been the problem. Um, so that's, that's number two is the, the continued misrepresentation of the property in that they're renting it out. It'll be, uh, above and beyond what they've been permitted to operate the business as. And then the third is the threat to public safety and that's the big one. And that's the last one on why we're going to deny, uh, uh, an application if we perceive that there's a potential threat to public safety. And obviously knowingly having people sleep in an area where there's, uh, a furnace and a water heater attention. It, it's really a disregard for, for their customers and disregard for public safety and it puts people at risk. And as a city, now that we have knowledge of that, it's incumbent on us to respond to that and deal with that. So that's, that's the primary basis for the denial of this, uh, application. And if you have questions as to why that's dangerous, uh, have that area, the sleeping area that Joe's here and you can answer any questions. So with that, I'm available for any questions. And, um, do we want to hear from Mr. Heather?
No, I would have Judge Mike or. I, I didn't really have a presentation, but I do have knowledge of the property. I did go out there in two thousand and ten, as is customary, went on a property sold and I did identify that there was a lower floor area. Uh, you know, it's, let's play with lower floor areas because they're on a hillside. And it's very frequent that those have been developed over the years. This particular property, uh, the infrastructure was put in for that living space downstairs, but it was not suitable for sleeping. And in terms of the building code, the building code, uh, seeks to govern a broad base of infrastructure that's built. And human interaction with man-made stuff. So a real fundamental part of the building code and really the basis for the building code is humans that are most vulnerable when they're sleeping. And even more so sleeping in an unfamiliar place. So when I did my original inspection in two thousand and ten, it was clearly a space and it was vacant. But the infrastructure was such that it would induce people to use it as a bed. So it was incumbent on me at the time, even though it wasn't being used as a sleeping room, I identified it to the people purchasing the property saying, don't use this as a sleeping. Uh, and I think we're all aware, we see news reports where occasionally disaster with false people. And I think this was instigated something, I think in the mid eighties, when an entire family of thirteen was killed. With these kinds of exact circumstances. So it is incumbent on me to say, hey, we're notifying you this and acknowledge that and there was no issues. And I think we issued, uh. The vacation rental and, um, and until such final hours notified some years later, hey, we got an advertisement, maybe one of the renewals, I, I don't really know. Uh, but I was contacted and say, hey, can you make sure this is still not being used as a sleeping room? So I contacted the property manager owner at that time. And again, I, I'm not the FBI, I don't do investigations. I call him up and said, hey, this is why I've been notified. Did you know this shouldn't be used as a sleeping room? They said, okay, great. I met them out there, uh, they had removed the vents into the driveway, said, uh, there was some miscommunication, we won't be doing this anymore. Uh, I, I didn't write a report at that time because the problem solved. They said, okay, well, we'll take care of that. Apparently they were aware because we did have a discussion that, hey, this was very expensive to modify this lower area. So the people sleeping there weren't breathing and communicating with the fuel burning appliance, why they're sleeping. It was rather expensive. So they said, well, just modify our listing. And at that time, there was no reports right because. The components for the sleeping, sleeping, the, the mattresses were put out in the driveway and they were leaving the property. It was no longer being used as a sleeping area. Problem solved. So it wasn't until I was contacted on the renewal and they did show me the listing, show me the five bedroom place. And, and that's when I explained, say, well, this is why it shouldn't be used for that because not only is it a place for humans, again. At our most vulnerable when we're sleeping, now we have businesses, basically a hotel, sleeping in an unfamiliar place. And as a jurisdiction, we issued a license for this and now we have repeated items like, well, it, it shouldn't be used for that. So that was my own property, but we didn't have a lot of paperwork with it because the problem was solved. I might follow it, that's it some years ago, so it wasn't until as much recent one. So if you have any technical questions in regards to what the specifics there, I think that's really where I'm going.
We'll come back to Commissioner, I guess we'll, um, start with questions we might have, because we'll start with.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Almody.
Uh, my only question is, you're talking about one bedroom that they were, the one bedroom that was being used with the furnace, but. That becomes for one of the five, what about the fourth bedroom?
Uh, you know, it's been a number of years since I've been there and I did note in my report in two thousand and ten, that the lower floor area cannot be used as a sleeping area. So a lot of times these lower floor areas are divided up because they're gaming rooms, family rooms, you know that. And so the infrastructure was conducive to being used as a sleeping room. And so my obligation was to identify, don't use this as a sleeping room, don't be tempted. It poses a risk. Uh, however, you know, it's one of those things that it can go twenty years without a risk to anybody. We don't know that date and time when that furnace or the water heater fails.
Thank you.
And it may ask.
Yes, um, when you revisited and you were told, um, that it, it was a misunderstanding and it won't happen again, what's your, what's that?
Uh, I did not write a report because the problem was resolved.
Yes.
Uh, and I did, I do recall walking down into the lower floor area and discussing the furnace and the water heater that was there. And there was, uh, an indication that it was a lot of expense with modifying that equipment to make it comply. So therefore they elected not to do it. And that's, we did, we did, so apparently they, they did get some kind of estimate, so there was some knowledge about that. But from my standpoint, they complied. The hazard was abated, that's my concern, so.
But, but that was twenty twenty-one, right?
Yeah, there's sometime in the past, that's why there wasn't a written report, because the problem was solved. Uh, my goal was to go out there, solve the problem, make them aware. I would take it at face value that, okay, they're aware, this is the hazard actually. I, I went through the details of why this is a hazard. And there was some knowledge about that because I guess they did get estimates that they found to be maybe a little too expensive for their operations at the time. But I can't require them to change anything, they modified use, therefore they can continue with the use of a non-sleeping.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson.
I'm sort of curious why it's dangerous. When we have a, like a gas stove in our kitchen and that's a sleeping area. Why, why is?
Gas, it's a kitchen.
I'm sorry, a gas, a gas ridge.
Well, you, no, and you're right, you typically don't have a stove in the sleeping room and that actually would not be allowed if you put a stove in your sleeping room.
Okay.
Uh, and there's some exceptions with studio apartments and there's some infrastructure that's put in place. You can actually modify that to make sure some interconnections. But the main problem with a furnace is as you have products of combustion, so there's two components. So if those products fail, so there's a fail in the part that's burning. You're blowing air that's circulated through the house. So it instantly spreads the products of unburned combustion through the house. That's why it uniformly kills everybody in the house. Because it's, it's taking away the oxygen that we're breathing, you're sleeping and you, that carbon dioxide, you just fall asleep and die.
Okay, yeah, I was, wasn't aware of the proximity of combustion.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of the same location. And, and also the, the, the oxygen that is needed to burn that is being drawn from the same room that they're sleeping in. So typically, if you're in a living room or in a kitchen where you're awake, you're going to actually sense those things. But if you've already fallen asleep and that appliance fails, you have no way of knowing that that fails. And that's why the recent advent of carbon dioxide, there's things that have become popular. Try to mitigate those dangers.
Commissioner Wood. I have no questions. Um, so, um, we'll come back for, uh, questions for clarification or the city manager. Commissioner Getzel.
Um, no questions, definitely.
No question.
No question.
Commissioner Jackson. Attorney. Okay. Okay, so, um, coming up representative from the, uh, applicant.
I just got the one copy. To show you a lot of, it's a small one. I didn't get the.
Which means, yeah, that needs to come through the clerk.
I'm sorry.
And then.
And you give us state names.
Yes, my name is Vina Allo. And I am the, uh, city's owner of the ship to metal. And, uh, so, and, uh, the owner, so this is recurring to what he said first and then since it's not, not my English, it's my native language, I really don't understand, so I just go. But we got the inspection done in two thousand and ten. It was when the mini part of owner, she purchased the house and that was the inspection done. And, uh, heck then, the inspection before you can see that he mentioned that the door would. Should not be used. And we have two rooms downstairs. And, uh, the, the one room next to it, but they have a door in between. And then that room has a closet and a, uh, distance is far enough. So we were told, so at the time the mini, when we were renting it in two thousand and eighteen, she didn't tell us about it. However, two thousand and twenty-one, he came back and he did inspection of the property. And there was a letter saying that it would be official inspection. So he came to property and, uh, inspect the floor plan and, uh, checked the water heater and the furnace. And, uh, then he probably said that has. So that's a reason why he thought that, that this issue has been resolved. But anyway, the letter that we were denied one of the business gift, um. The room was used, so this, this representation of the room. And I believe you get the copy of the, this thing, it was attached. So the four months coming twenty-one, we need, we buy the short-term rental, I, I think, but I think that he attached his thirty days and more. And, uh, yes, I made a mistake there, we still have the listing. However, we never got the bookings from that long-term, thirty days and more. And, uh, right now we are talking about a short-term rental. So anyways, so, so that's the one thing I would explain, he said, okay, that I did it, sorry, because of English. So thank you for the opportunity to come to this hearing and discuss the denial of the short-term rental, license, video, property and real estate. I would also like to express my gratitude to the city of LA Oaks for allowing us to conduct a short-term rental. Our license video was denied twice. First on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and then one, uh, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. To demonstrate, to demonstrate our efforts to address the issues and we see the guidance, I would like to revisit what occurred in two thousand and twenty. The two pattern business siding were as followed. Participants left the orchestra for several days after they should have been brought in. But there are four days written. My question is whether these dates reflect when the beans were observed outside or when they were supposed to be brought back in. When examining these dates, I noticed that four on one Monday and three Sundays. In the labels, green, green waste conducts trash pickup on Mondays and instructs residents to place beans out by six AM on Monday nights. Therefore, three of these dates are the day before trash collection and one is the day of collection instead. It's possible there was a misunderstanding as our beans may have been out on Sunday night in preparation for only Monday pickup. Which might have led to the impression that they had been left out for an extended period. The second reason, too many vehicles on the street blocking neighboring drive, driveways. But there are several days written. From the beginning of our short-term rental operations, we have actively communicated with our neighbors and three Los Encinos. They have not received any parking complaints from them. Since the street in front of our property has a designated fire lane, we strictly prohibited guests from parking on those encino's street. Prior to their arrival, we asked guests how many cars they would have and informed them. That a maximum of three vehicles could be parked in the driveway. If additional parking is needed, we guided them to park on Via Verde. I understand there was a neighbor who complained about blocked driveways, so I took photos this morning to show the situation. There are two spots between driveways. Where parking might seem feasible, but as you can see, so you can see the pictures, there are two there for even a bicycle. In front of ten lots and seniors, the area is a fire lane, leaving only one spot where a van is currently parked. In the picture, and the street in front of these neighboring properties is narrow. But Via Verde, located nearby, is wider and more suitable for additional parking. Therefore, we always recommend you guests park on Via Verde. I don't think that our guests have parked directly in front of driveways, which would block access. If guests park where the van is, the space is designated as public parking. There's nothing in the short-term rental guidelines indicating that guests cannot use public parking. So when our short-term rental license was initially denied, we did not have the opportunity to clarify these issues. So I would like to address them here. I believe it would have been helpful for us to be informed about specific trash bin and parking complaints as they arose. Which would have allowed us to make timely corrections and prevent future occurrences rather than waiting until renewal time. After addressing the identified issues, we successfully obtained a short-term rental license. Since then, we have been regularly reached out to Karen via email to inquire about any potential complaints from neighbors. The only response we received was on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, when Karen informed us, I have not heard of, of any complaints. The letter sent on November fifth, two thousand and twenty-one was referenced in the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, second renewal denial notice. It states, a floor plan to include a parking plan was received, but the floor plan does not match our records. We have scheduled a physical inspection by the union official on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one and eleven AM. So, so our department is leaving for three Los Encinos, eight guests, and you're authorized for must reflect this manner. Proof of this change online is required. We will say we have not received an inspection report immediately following the inspection. So this morning I requested a copy from Karen. However, we were advised to hear the result during the today's hearing. And I found Francis, my husband, ex-husband, he was at the inspection. We post that during his conversation with the inspector on the day of inspection, the house passed without any violation found. Following correction of the issue raised, we are able to renew the license for the two, year two thousand and twenty-two. And we corrected the short-term rental advertising and that was a big module able to bond by until now, until October two thousand and twenty-four. But October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, we knew, we knew denial letter sites, three business were denied. The first was an incomplete application. I disubmit the application on October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, when I submitted the appeal. The second reason was that the property has consistently been authorized as a five-bedroom bedroom home. And an add was attached as evidence. Yes, the add does state five bedrooms and we apologize for this in presentation. However, this authorization pertains to rentals of thirty days or more in the labels, which qualifies as a long-term rental and is unrelated to short-term rental regulations. Chapter five point twenty-four concerning short-term rentals and home share defines a short-term rental as a pro-diving, lodging or sleeping purposes for any period less than thirty consecutive days. We have posted this long-term rental authorization but received no bookings through it. And as a result, we forgot to revise. We sincerely apologize for this oversight and have sincerely removed the add completely. After being informed in two thousand and twenty-one, we updated all our short-term rental ads to reflect the property as a three-bedroom. Additionally, the property contains five, five rooms, including one with a furnace and water heater. There are two rooms on the lower floor. The denial letter states that the two, uh, two thousand and ten inspection indicate that the lower floor rooms could not be used for sleeping due to the presence of a furnace and water heater. During the two thousand and ten inspection conducted when mini car purchased the property, the reported, the reports loaded furnace and water heater in lower floor group. This room shall not be used as a sleeping room, which I interpreted as setting the guest maximum at ten, where it is. The furnace and water heater are located in one room with a door separating it from the other. I would like to clarify if this property can be authorized as a three-bedroom or two-bedroom. And the other one that I could pronounce is this, this outcome, and he mentioned that back then, when he was talking to the inspector on the spot. Uh, they found the vent was from the kitchen, that from the room. So he was okay to use the room, that's what he said, but I want to talk to him with the inspector. So I have submitted the appeal with our proposed correction for these three violations. Since this documentation has been provided, I assume you have given the plans to address these issues. If they are insufficient to continue operating the short-term rental at three Los Encinos, I would, I would appreciate kindness on additional steps we find. This is why despite my anxiety about speaking English publicly, especially in a hearing setting, I'm here to listen to your recommendations. Once again, I apologize for any concerns we have cast the city of the labels. And I thank you again for your time and for allowing me to appeal the decision to deny our short-term rental license.
Uh, thank you. So we'll come back to, uh, commissioners, uh, questions for clarification.
Um, I really wanted to look at that before I have questions. If you need more, because I have, I'm sorry, I didn't know that I need to make six.
Has everybody seen it?
No. Yeah, so you can leave it.
Yeah, so you can leave it.
Isn't it the same thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
You have a question to chat?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Did you receive any complaints other than the parking? Loud noises, parties or anything like that?
Yeah, not, no, not recently.
But if ever, I mean, there.
The letters that you have in your packet are in regards to the, in the past. Okay.
Well, it was about the parking, not ever about the noise or parties waiting.
I know, they they have copies of the letters about any complaints.
But Francis, he, so there's the last one, I put the letter from Francis because he couldn't come. And every day he stops by around nine to eleven o'clock. Because that's the time that he's coming in the gym, but he always go there and make sure that the people are not doing the parts. And the labor complaint is not the labor around the house, it's a cross from the property. So the people who are in front of us or next to us, they never. And they are, they are supposed to be the first people to. If there is a meeting in the. No, not right now.
So are you and your ex-husband still managing it or has it changed since? One and, yeah, I'm starting to define my mind ahead.
Okay, so, so I'm the business owner, so we have been doing together and then we divorced. However, you know, since we have two young children, we are kind of living together. And since we have this issue of those, I just, you know. Ask him to step down and I'm going to be the only person who will be in charge of it.
So we both involved and then from one?
Since two thousand eighteen. Took time to think about it. Uh, owner of value and we are not there and we are not informed until two thousand, uh, until two thousand twenty four, the letter. It told me about two thousand ten four, we never seen it.
So since twenty one, since eighteen. You both are at twenty one when the inspector came.
I was not there, but my husband, Francis was there and then yes. And the other one is, uh, that was our mistake that we didn't get the return phone. But when the city state comes, the city of Seaside, Obama, where we be, they usually give us a different phone. And that was our mistake. And so he thought that he was at. And we got the, we corrected the violations, so he thought that he was taken care of. And the other one was we devised the whole short term rental ads. And we got the application, we submitted application in two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty one. So there there should be nothing here, but there are the copies committed. And I don't know why he didn't submit last time, but you know, yes, we did submit only the check. However, when we were denied. On October third, I think I went to the city and asked him why we were denied. And the response I found was the papers were gone to the city manager, so just wait. You're your problem. So I visited like four times. And this is the first time I heard that application was not ever submitted, because I didn't know. And I didn't know how to do appeal. I was sending emails twice. How do I need to appeal? I I know that how busy you guys are, so I didn't want to bother. So once a week I would send you an email. How can I appeal? Because the internal says that I cannot appeal. And so, like, so I didn't hear anything. So October twenty third, I came here, so I just had written and then I just give them the. Press how I'm gonna correct. And then I didn't hear anything. And the day before I was notified that I I didn't have a hearing, that was the time that I visited it. And that was the time that next day I was, I heard the video. So I didn't know how to hear it, I didn't know how to do it. And this is the time that I was informed of the investigation proof. And. Yeah, that was the only good thing for this side.
Thank you for coming. Um, so it sounds like you were clear that for health and safety reasons. You should not use the lower level for your short term rental. But my question is either only that room or two rooms. But any part of that lower level, you were aware that there was some part of that lower level that was not significantly for available. Or I'm sorry, for a short term rental.
Yes, two thousand fifteen.
So. How is it different for a more than thirty day rental? Is it now safe for somebody to rent it for more than thirty days?
I'm not saying that it's safe, so that's why I say I'm sorry for his presenting it. And I should have deleted back then. But we have L B A P and we have G O and websites. And you know, we never got anything from that website, so we were just, you know, talking about the website. And we never got anything from the website. So nobody stayed, but I'm not saying that I didn't do it. I didn't.
So when was it that the month, the longer than thirty day advertisement going up?
That's something I need to talk to the partner, I do. For, uh, the long term, we, so. The rental to short term business, usually it is half during the June, July, August. And other than that, we can have many cookies. And usually on the weekends. And we had a cookie. For two years, we didn't have any meetings going on for this kind of life of the license. And just this way, you know, this is for thirty days more, I think that's probably will happen. But I think for that, you know, that I'm a more than. So for your question, I didn't know. I'm sorry, I didn't know the date, but if needed, I would cover something, I can somebody. And I really want to say that we are really sorry. I'm not saying that you sense it is a thirty days or more, we are able to post it as a five bedrooms, no. It's not, I think we are aware of that. So I, I'm aware of the house issue.
Thank you. I, so the posted more than thirty days.
Yes.
Which is, I'm looking, we, we, we trying to rent like. Thirty days, three days, three days, or are we just wanting to rent it out so someone to move in live there?
If if they just stay there like a one month or two months or three months, then I'm.
But you weren't trying to rent it for like a family that wanted to come in and stay there forever, like the year.
No, no, because I'm not open.
Okay.
We just rented as a vacation rental.
Okay.
So no.
So was the trying to rent it by month to month, that would have, would be. Paying there to try to not fall under the S D R restrictions, that, was that sort of the?
So my, my point is, right now, you know. The the denial is for the short term rental permit. And one of the reasons was we didn't devise the ad and we are consistently violating it. But that's the reason why I was trying to mention the two thousand twenty one divorce inspection. And so we should get, you know, the report, however, we discussed and, you know, he mentioned the test. But there could be a misunderstanding, but however, we understood, so we just use only, we didn't use that room. For the short term rental. So for the short term rental permit, my question is, why the thirty days and more rental advertisement? Which has nothing to do with the document permit, is a big one, it is not, not. And regarding the health issue and I'm not supposed, I understand, I'm not supposed to advertise it for the long term or any. So that was my mistake, so we, as soon as we were notified, we deleted, we completely shut it down. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, actually, I have a kind of question for Mr. Hadley. I don't know if it's appropriate time to ask. Um, so one of the issues appears to be the, a little bit of confusion about. From two thousand ten. Room or rooms you use, I don't count the exact wording.
Identified in the report in two thousand ten because vacation rentals were not a thing.
Understand.
Clearly just identified the lower floor was not to be used for sleeping. And and just to get back in the weeds a little bit, I want to question about the technical side, you know. I have spayed with all the coats this big, but those fuel burning appliances use the same oxygen. And so that's what for the box, and that, that was really the hazard, so they're short in the long term.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. You were correct in looking at that, considering it's short term longer, there is, I was looking at that. That was my note, anybody staying there.
The other question I had. Was, uh, she mentioned that there's a door between rooms, I understand, my. More knowledge of these things is that there has to be a special door.
Yes, you're, you're correct. And there would be modifications made, so if that door is shut. How was that appliance proceeding, the oxygen needs to burn, and that's where the failure comes. That's why I identified that lower floor. I didn't say should not be used, I use very specifically shall not. And that, I mean, that's real specific. This is actually a very uncommon report that I wrote back then. I mean, I, we do a lot of these, and that, that was very specific to call out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question. I think you said it, and I think it's written somewhere, but I wasn't sure what you said. And English is my second language, so you are my second.
I'm sorry.
So, um, you, uh, you said to remove the ads. Yes, seven five bedrooms, all of them.
Yeah, begging two thousand twenty one for the short term rental. When we did inspections and got notified, we removed all of them. But the issue was the one, the one ad regarding the long term rental, thirty days and more, it was still empty.
So when was that one removed?
We moved, uh, uh, so we, October, I don't know exactly, but beginning of October two thousand twenty four. And the video was not good.
So that's the one that you just.
Because that's, that's the time that we were notified, and if you look at the copy. The copy that C December was on September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four, this. Yes, and the other one is, can I ask a question to the inspector? Because the, so my one question is. The one property that I used to live in Seaside, seventeen twenty six, so the street. We have all the ponies in the middle of the hallway. And we have our rooms in between, the three rooms right next to you, so there's a ponies in the hallway. And a room, 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 and is that considered to be a, a health issue as well? Because the, because you know, right now it's like, you know, like a special area. So in the room, we cannot have a ponies, I understand that. But in, so my, you know, since you guys are talking about one bedroom and still you're having a best of in the room. And you know, it's a exceptional modifications, but there are so many rooms like that. So I'm just wondering, there are many rooms, so I used to live in the two houses in Seaside, eleven hundred, where I am, seventeen twenty six. So both, both of them in the hallway, they had ponies. And it's that was helping and a health issue as well. Because I believe that when you guys, you guys were making the house, they are trying to make the house safe and a leave over for the people to leave.
Okay, I'm talking, just saying, usually there's a wall of horns and sort of, and they're electric.
Um, okay, so.
I, I, that's just my guess. I'll, I'll do the same, and you would have to have it inspected. Right, yeah, I, I, I missed your sentence.
Because of its second language, I'll accept the misunderstanding, they didn't pay for the permanent. They didn't pay, they didn't do an application. So I don't know if there is a misunderstanding here, that, that's the results specifically you need to apply. But I'm gonna accept the misunderstanding. Uh, I have a friend that has a rental also very similar to yours. There are three bedrooms upstairs, two downstairs, there may be two upstairs and three downstairs, I don't know. But they only rent the top floor out, there is a locked door that goes downstairs. I don't know if this situation can be mitigated by. There's a lock on the door, you cannot go downstairs, period, rental or not abandoned. Oh, excuse me, whether it's rented out all the time, part time or whatever. Don't know if that can be done here, and how that is enforced.
Let's keep this to the question, your verification, we'll come back to your.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's it.
I really don't have any questions here, any of those really, all really big questions, but anyway, we'll put it out to public comment, if there's anybody.
That's some, that's a clarification.
Sure.
So, so back in two thousand twenty one, when I first got here, so I remember this well. One of the first contentious issues that I had when I got here as city manager. And we were getting a lot of complaints from residents up there. Uh, primarily about parties and noise and and about parking issue. So I met with Mr. Hallwell. Um, and went over the complaints with them, we sent him a letter of search, and then I met with him. And we went over the complaints. Um, and we did work out a solution, um, and he did resubmit a, a plan for us on who to, who to contact. So the, the residents who lived around the area and knew who they were to contact, and he did do a good job of reaching out. After I bonded him up a little bit to reach out to neighbors. And, you know, and kind of extended up a novel branch and, and worked with them, and then as the city to help. We actually took away one of the parking spaces that actually was a problem for one of the residents. Anyway, regardless of who parked in it, they couldn't back out of the driveway, and that resolved a lot of those problems. So those, the garbage cans, the noise, the, um, parking, that, that all was resolved. Uh, and we haven't received any complaints about this since then. Um, but at the time, we did raise the issue of the, uh, five bedrooms versus three bedrooms. Uh, Mr. Hallwell acknowledged that he understood and knew that it wasn't supposed to be five bedrooms and that they would be three bedrooms. Um, so part of the confusion on this, and, and, you know, again, this is confusing and we have limited resources. Which, which is part of why we're here and part of why we have the roles, uh, for these businesses to operate. Is we don't have the ability really to police these as thoroughly as some bigger cities. And the staff should, that shouldn't be on staff to be in ensuring that businesses are functioning the way that they should be functioning. Not screwing the rules and not putting people's safety at risk. That should just be business owners operating a good business. And so in this case, we keep bringing this issue about thirty day versus the short term rental. So my recollection, and I could be foggy, but I've gone off a staff showed me. And, you know, again, it's confusing, so why, you know, one picture showed up in the packet and others didn't. It's because it's confusing as it's advertised on, on Airbnb, because they were advertising in three different ways. They were advertising it as a short term rental, whole house. As a thirty day or longer whole house. To my recollection, both, both were five bedrooms. Uh, but then also you could rent a, a room individually. And use the kitchen and the living room and all of that, and bathrooms as common area if people are willing to do that and rent the rent individually. Uh, based on there are current ordinance and the city attorney can correct me. I don't think there's any violation of any of those thirty issues, if, if somebody wants to rent the house out that way. Could be a discussion for you all, maybe we want to tweak the ordinance later. Uh, because we do have a limited number of short term rentals and. Do we want to give, there's not going to be the opportunity to rent them long term, but sure, that's for you. And for a future date. Um, but that's why some of the confusion in here about, uh, was it a thirty day, a, a longer short term rental? Uh, my recollection was there were the three and they were all listed as five bedroom, uh, house. Um, and, and again, my concern is that in two thousand twenty one, when I met with Mr. Hallwell, who, from English is his first language. Uh, uh, he, he did acknowledge to me and to Mr. Hadley that he understood that it was a three bedroom house. And so whether it's a mistake that it was listed as a five bedroom house or not, whether or not they utilized this, I don't know. If whether or not they utilize Airbnb, but it's still up in twenty two four, and so that's our concern.
But if there is any other type of hand for the short term rental, and if he says five bedroom, then please tell them.
So I do, I have another question. So going forward, who would be the one operating the short term rental? City's out of the picture completely. Alright, so we'll take that public comment, if there's anybody that could like to comment on this issue. Okay, seeing that, come back to the commission. Okay, commissioners, um, so end up her comments. Ms. Castle.
I know it's difficult. Uh, first of all, language barriers, secondly. Sharing responsibility, they're paying.
Sharing responsibility, the occasions between uh partners, whether they're married partners or business partners or both. But there is risk, there is a. A need to take responsibility, and uh you seem to be willing to step up. What what steps are you taking to make sure that this stuff can happen in the future?
So we have the application, so while I prepare this paper, I was looking at online your website. And uh, so the number one, he says the application needs to be submitted. Also, they mentioned about the somehow documentation needs to be done, so I will make sure that I will do all of the papers. And I think you can see how I prepare, I'm really like the the planning, so I'm gonna make sure that that's the easy part. And I will also solve two thousand twenty two and some two thousand twenty one, some other applications, it has been every year submitted it. So, you know, and the application part is not that difficult, so I can do it, and even this one with a text P T I was leaving to me. So I will do that, and the second one is, so I want to get a clarification, whether it's a three month bedroom or four bedroom, but I'm also willing to have the lock. Because it has a stairs, so it's not like a true door, it's kind of like a. So I was thinking about that too, as you mentioned, but the door should be this way. And if the, oh, so either one room or two rooms, whatever, or decisions make, we will try to make a modification. And regarding the, or changing the, you know, getting a permit and removing the ponies and water here, I'm not the only. And I don't think the owner will be willing to make modifications, so we can run the business, so in the case, I don't think. And uh, as as long as, you know, we are notified on October two thousand twenty four, we are not doing a business, and all the months, we are not doing a business, no matter. So we are really, I am really trying to think about this one.
Okay, um, comments.
Um, you have other? From the terminals? Yeah, yes, we do, we in seaside, we have three short term rentals, and we never had any issues with the video K five. And Jackie, who is a necessary inside, she already knows me, and uh. Thank you, we never had any.
Thoughts, um, question for you? Well, is this a, just for clarification, we'll take comments now, and we'll uh entertain most of this.
Sure, okay, I just got to show up for clarification. Uh, the city manager first, I guess, just to be clear, the, all the talk about the vans, the party, that wasn't part of the reasons that did not, the the.
At the time, two thousand twenty one, he was.
Right, but not, not what we're looking at now, that's it, okay, that's what I thought, there's a measure, okay. Um, and for the special, just, well, I'm clear, we kind of talked around this, the roof downstairs, you're saying, you're saying none of the rooms should be used as the bedroom. Right, okay. And the report was very. Or have I solved it? Shall not be used. So the whole four nine. Yeah. Okay, so that's what I thought. That's an unusual report for me to write for the time of quality track, so you play that's.
That's what it says, he says the room and the roofs.
Says the roofs don't.
No, it's not. Not before the room. No, was in two thousand twenty four, then.
The two thousand ten on us.
Yeah.
It's talking about, you had it one year.
This room shall not be used as a sleeping room.
Okay. This room shall not be used.
No, there is furnace and water heater and the lower floor room, so he identifies the lower floor as one room.
Okay.
And then says this room shall not be used. Not say that there's two rooms on the lower floor, he says they're in lower floor room. So basically, he's indicating, as I indicate, that the lower floor is considered one room and it shall not be used as a sleeping room.
And that, and that's what city manager did, the discussion was in twenty one was three vendors. Okay, correct. It just curious, if you mentioned you had been rented out, because not a lot, I, maybe it's alright just turning it into just a rental. I mean, there are plenty of families that would be happy to rent a home and then.
I think that's a property, I think I'm going to please say so.
Well, okay, this isn't a consider me, it's um, I'd avoid all this.
And uh, you case the penalty to them move out, then I'm the one who needs to do the eviction, and I'm not the property owner.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay. Um, comments.
Um, I have that comment back above the parking, even though that's not in this one, and you talked about you had no more than three cars in the drive open. I think our ordinance is saying no more than three cars per bedroom total. One car.
One car.
One, one car per bedroom total, so that doesn't mean three in the driveway and eight down the street, it means three.
Oh, okay, then the the tents or the guests cannot be moved in, right?
That's my understanding, can I have clarification? Yes, we're hearing clarification, and that it's a total of three. So we just need to be sure that the managers of our short term rentals are reading the newest updated versions, which I think you did receive. If that's right, everybody receives any of that, so if they were not aware that their, the cars were free. And I only give them where I come, yes, thank you for that.
Yes, I I just have a small question, trying to dial the pieces together in my head, uh we received a floor plan that matches our records. Then we were known, remember, that was the floor plan. And the floor plan we received does not match our record in twenty twenty one, but since then, has there been a floor plan that matches our records submitted?
Definitely, yeah.
Do we have, have a current floor plan, but uh nothing has been submitted.
Nothing's bought, yeah, okay, sorry, didn't have the answer right.
My company's into that, he says that the floor plan was committed, but it was not matching the form that you have. You can look at the lettering in two thousand twenty one, that's what he said, that's why inspector came to the. I also send the floor plan.
Since then.
How since that happened?
You're asking currently?
Yeah.
The last one that we got was in twenty twenty one.
Okay, and it 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 didn't match.
That's why he came to the.
That's, yeah.
Mr. Hallwell replied, did right.
I think he did, yes.
So I did not.
Yeah, okay, it did, I'm telling.
Comments, Mr. Jackson. I think I already missed all the four, that, well, we're going to start the session, we're still, I was like, look at it.
So just for a clarification, so I see this letter on November fifth, twenty one, to your ex husband, and it says on November seventeen. You guys were told specifically you could only have eight guests and three bedrooms, and then you came, um, sorry, um, Inspector Henry, and he said, okay. And there were, uh, mattress on the driveway, and you guys said, okay, only three bedrooms.
If you go to the story, so then.
The, sorry, and you, I just, and you said only three bedrooms, and then you took, changed the ad and said only three bedrooms for a while, and then you put another ad, it's a five bedrooms.
No, that's not what we do.
But was it, I I believe there was.
Yes, 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 there is a long term rental by, it's not like we are switching around, it has been there since. Yes, the long term rental, the five bedroom, he has been there, and we later we stayed not to be five times.
So there has not been a five bedroom listing for this property since two thousand twenty one?
Yes. The short term.
I mean, short, short term rental.
Short term rental.
So there's only been a short term rental advertisement that says there's three bedrooms.
I think so, yes.
Really? Because I think there's, I think there's one in here from twenty four that says it's five bedrooms.
Okay.
For that, for that.
Can I think of, can I think of that?
That's one, yeah, so, it's probably one, I was, is it one one?
The great.
Look at, yeah, look at your pretty, they had the top one, six, uh, twenty eight.
There is no other item committed since two thousand twenty one after the inspection, short term rental say they do them.
Five bedrooms, three bedrooms, yeah, look at the top, and this is. So ten twenty eight is still six, uh, ten, eight, twenty one, and uh.
Twenty one, thirty one, I can find it that.
Oh, here we go. This is it, so this one's in the, oh, it's thirty nine, I don't know. On nine one. Yeah, so, yeah. Always been bad.
This is, I mean, because we've now do the cost of the items, but there's so many papers that.
No, 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 okay, um, but let's start that too, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, this is, I mean, it's okay for short term, yeah.
Yes, I'm not saying that long term, we are supposed to rent our fifth bedroom, we may do this.
Okay.
But it's not like we are changing the openness, so.
I guess my concern is, if you think it's okay, it's when, for short term rentals to have three bedrooms, for long term rentals to have five, it wasn't safe downstairs.
So I don't think that here, if I saw. There there is the advertisement long term, however, I don't think that this is right, and that was the mistake, because uh we never took, so.
Um, um, sorry, let me just stop for a second, let me finish my thought. So I guess what what I'm, what I'm saying is, so for a short term rental, we could bedrooms, you knew the bottom two bedrooms were unsafe, but then you listed it as a high bedroom. Long term rental, and all of those bedrooms are still unsafe, so that that's my insert, so the safety thing.
But we didn't have, uh.
But it has nothing to do with short term or long term.
Yes, yes.
Yes, the bottom two bedrooms for somebody, and it was an unsafe fact.
But I want to keep on the two thousand twenty one, there was inspection, and we didn't post a long term, because we can't usually turn anymore as a three, five bedroom. And there's a reason, oh, maybe to the long term, I think that's not about.
I I don't think you're interested, but thank you.
Okay.
And it was, uh, saying, sorry, and they just forgot to back, they.
Oh, for the five, the five.
Well, it was up five initially, after twenty one, we each, they changed. Right, right, they came, I think she's saying. They, they changed the short term, because that's what they were focused on, they had this uh one sitting out there for a long term, they never. And then you never thought we'll change it.
Oh, yeah, but they also have the ad that was on uh ten twenty sixth, after they said they had removed everything. Uh, and um, that was not after October twenty third, when he said he removed everything. Okay, so that's the, he says, yeah, okay.
For the current general.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's the piece that's true for them, yeah, yeah.
I knew something was, I really really miss that.
All good questions and comments, so I'm gonna entertain most of you to accept uh or deny um the resolution uh to deny. A short term rental license, so I'm gonna check, see if you open up to the public, please. Uh, and then, I think, yeah, I guess, there's no, okay, yeah. Maybe, um, I think my biggest concern is that, is important, we can stand here and say you can't do this. But it's inside a house, and what's happening, probably messages with a potential renter. If they want to rent it, and say, well, we have some family that wants to join us. How do we enforce, how do we say they are definitely not renting out five bedrooms? I think everybody here has that concern, how you manage, we can tell them. Yes, this is your business, this is your home. But you can't rent out the two, there's a question for that for, but how do we enforce them? And that's just the concern I have, I would guarantee they're not going to just say, well, they will know, they'll find out, we'll take that chance, so. Be for the comments from the public. Seeing that, um, come back to um entertaining motion to either, except or deny the um. And resolutions to deny the current rental license.
This is, I. Is a wrongful part of motion, kind of thing with the, that I was talking about with some sort of uh condition on it, that they would have to be wired. Access to the overall, so that we would know that it's not being used, you know, that we think what they get down with it. Instead, that's that we know, we know, the inspector, that if you see it, it's like, okay, it's secure, no, no, no guests going down the bottom. Is that something we could even talk about here?
Mr. Loco, is that something we can do, um, in the resolution, I mean, it was a planning commission thing, normal thing, we would have some latitude.
Yeah, the, you would have latitude, the the code talks about either approving or denying, however, you could, you could deny the appeal and condition that. Um, on something, the code is silent test to that specific question.
Thank you.
And I would have a concern with that, I feel back and forth, yeah. But well, that, but also, is there an exit downstairs? Because if you're locked in the exit way, or an exit way, then there's a part of safety exit that's being locked.
Well, can I entertain motion, and we can discuss it further, and then I was, maybe amend what you do. So entertain motion to either accept, uh, except or deny the resolution to deny their short term rental license.
And regarding the exit, we have an exit in the room, there were here in a funny space.
Yeah, we'll discuss that, we have time.
But I'm not sure, like, if you repeat what you're asking us to do that.
I'm looking for a uh a motion to either accept. The resolution to deny the short term rental license, or to be denied, and we can come back and discuss it at any. Conditions, but I.
Could you want to make a motion, or are you still considering making a motion, or?
I'm, um.
Because I have.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh. Oh, we.
Except the.
No, we deny it, or excuse me, except, we let them do the permit. But with the conditions, that that downstairs is blocked off only to the, to the home line. And we can discuss that, that in the motion. So we can continue, I'm sort of getting confused with accept or deny or denial, uh, but let them do a rental. The net lower floor blocked off, so not accept or denial. If that's what I'm trying to say, yes.
Contingencies, yes, yeah.
Is it a denial contingency, or is not accepted a denial?
I mean.
I don't think that's high school, people.
I think we're.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
If that was the pleasure of the planning commission, then what you would be doing would be to uphold the appeal, which would effectively overturn uh staff's uh. Decide, previous decision, and then continue, condition that as you saw there.
Thank you, smart man, bro.
Yeah. And because of that condition, it would alleviate any liability to the city, if that was violated. You know, there's a lot of things back to enforcement, you know, we told them what to do, and they violated that, how do we, you know, we can't enforce that. But at least we're free and clear, we made that motion that you can't use the bottom floor.
So there is a motion on the table, so the, so what's the process?
So the second, or third motion is to accept the.
Denial, no.
The bill, I mean, except the bill.
Except the.
Condition upon, with, with the conditions, our total all floor is. Why won't secure the lower floor? To guess?
To guess, yes.
Uh, Mr. Happy, would that satisfy you?
Well, I I appreciate the effort to try to find a a resolution, the implementation of that, because it's a single family dwelling, you're now seeking to divide the house. When one occupant said that you're, you're, I'm trying to make it a duplex, and what infrastructure is down below that is supportive? Yeah, if you're saying they have no access to the lower floor, but those are, they have access to the lower floor to control their environmental conditions. You're now concluding that from going to the lower floor, that's where, so therefore there would be, you would be required in an infrastructure change to the building. So the occupants of the upper floor have access to those components, the low floor, which control their environment. In other words, is the thermostat down below, are the breaker boxes down below, are those components that make that a livable environment up above? But they're now separated from their ability to control their environment.
But they have separated their ability to control their environment. That's, so. It's a difficult. Uh, really, that's a hard deal to try to get through, so I, I don't know how you can really craft that, unless it's directing them to submit for a permit to. Separate those items, which is frequently done with the A D U or something, so that's, that's some of the hurdles I'm, I'm seeing.
With a rental unit. You know, if I'm renting a house, and something goes wrong with the water heater. Hello homeowner, I need a problem with the water heater, or I have a problem with the heating system.
But that's not something we do at, at a council.
Yeah, that's not a.
To, from a jurisdictional point of view, to direct.
They need to make up their own decision though.
Yeah, so I mean, you have to figure out how. That problem was actually implemented.
Yes, and so I wouldn't be comfortable, um, making decisions such as that, without really adding difficulties expected, I mean, looking at place, looking at funds. And knowing the consequences it can have, given, like, we're talking about the environmental controls, et cetera, et cetera. But that's just my, but there's a motion on the floor, so I, you know, don't want to bypass process.
So to, to add to what the building official said. As your city manager, my job is to, is to operate the city efficiently and effectively and safeguard taxpayer resources and dollars. Um, this has been an administrative, uh, challenge for us. Yes. Running this short-term program by definition is going to be challenging from a research standpoint. Uh, but I think you've heard several times from the applicant. Um, that they should bring him in a stat on us to tell her if she was in violation of rules, rather than understanding the rules and applying by the rules. So, uh, the short-term rental license process. Commissioner Dashon is already a condition, a condition that you've been permitted to run a business under the guidance and under the rules and regulations and codes that we have in place. Uh, and all of those pointed to a three-bedroom. For house, not a five-bedroom house. So, um, while I appreciate what you're trying to do and trying to work to the solution, for me as the city manager, from an enforcement and administrative standpoint. Um, rather than alleviating the administrative burden that this denial was seeking to remedy, as well as the public safety, we are actually adding more burden on the city. Because now we have to do inspections to inspect and make sure that the, uh. That the downstairs has been blocked off, and that they're not opening it up and they're renting it out and all this stuff.
But wouldn't that be done with one single inspection, and it's got a lot, that alleviates, you know. And there's any number of rules and regulations that city apply, that we don't go out every day and make sure that they're done, you know. So, it would alleviate our liability. If it's inspected, yes, it was done accordingly. And that's it. If they violate it, that's their problem, not the city's, for liability purposes. That's, that's, yeah. So I, I guess. Yeah, okay.
I, I have a different motion proposed, but I don't want to.
Okay, I made a motion, you can, you can. Next, if you want.
Second, I have a different motion. Give me a substitute motion, okay?
Sure, but we don't vote on his.
No.
No, that, okay, which I would suggest, that is, that's where my mind, my mind went to. There's a whole bunch of small issues, but nevertheless, there's a whole bunch of issues that came back through the years. And what we want is to allow the, obviously, you know, the, the, the business owners to be able to function within. Their rules, um, and at the same time, it's been difficult for the city to follow up with, and it's not necessarily. Um, it, well, yeah, anyway, that doesn't need to be there, but to me, I feel like. Out of, um, we want to give you time to resolve this, but we also want to ensure that it's not a burden on the city, and so why not just. Say, okay, we're, we're going to approve the denial, give you time to fix it, and then it's fixed, and once it's fixed, you give your permit back. That's mine. That's what I will go with.
I don't know, except that.
Um, okay.
So the motion is to.
Accept.
To deny.
Accept the denial that's proposed.
So, uh, deny the appeal.
Yeah, that's right, deny the appeal, yes. And then, once it's fixed, they give their license back.
Well, they have to reapply. That's why they have to.
Sure, they need to reapply.
Everybody elect, is there a, what they wait for?
So I'm thinking.
Okay.
So, in, in order for them to reapply, they have to wait a year to reapply.
So that's what I was wondering about, yes, I saw that, that cannot be changed.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay, and at the same time, there's been repetitive issues, and so it's a matter of like. How do you handle that? And I see other. Things about the way the advertisements are, that are kind of, um. To me. You know, would come up as issue, not as a concern for the city, but in other ways. And again, I totally get the language issue, English is my second language, and it was hard to learn, um. But I'm, I'm really, I feel like it's a management, I'm going to have to deal with all these little details, and so I feel like. Out of support for our city, and it's going to take time to resolve either way. I would motion to, um. Deny. Deny the appeal.
Okay.
Yeah.
One second.
Uh, five seconds.
Mr. Chair. The manager, if that's the pleasure of the planning commission, there is a draft resolution in your packet, and to evidence your, your review of the facts. And make those findings, and maybe clearly to adopt that resolution, uh, that's in your packet, which I think. Uh, your staff recommendation is to minimize appeal.
Right.
And uphold staff, uh, position.
That one's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
So everybody's familiar with that.
Thank you.
Everybody ran.
Yes.
So, um, you have the speed on that, so we're essentially, we have a motion and second to accept or to deny the appeal. Of this, um, okay, swing for the fine, I don't want to. Be labeled this too much. Uh, Mr. Jackson?
No, um, I recommend that, um.
I'm ready to come back for both, please.
Yeah, um, I definitely, um. Agree that there, there's a lot of things going on, and I think that the, uh, business owner, not to be confused with the homeowner. Business owner, uh. Could have some time to. Get her hands around business management before she continues in our city.
Okay. Mr. President? No. Mr. Whitehead?
No, my.
Mr. Penney?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking more times, but also in coordination with the owner, I mean, if the owner asks a business owner, because we do that with one of our. But our house in the area is basically managed by a manager, then if the owner needs to modify the house, or there's something that needs to be worked out there, that takes time anyway. So the year will go by and to me, and it will give time to all of that, for all of this to settle without burdening. You and the city.
Mr. Jack?
Okay.
Mr. Whitman? Um, the one thing that, I mean, when I was going through all this stuff, I made a list, this is all of the different. Communications back and forth, and I'm sure that there's, that's not everything. Um, so to me, this has just been such a burden on the city, um, through all of these years, um, you know, the, the parking and the garbage and all that stuff is irrelevant to what we're talking about here. Um, so, um, anyway, I'll put it up, I'd like to call for all both places to, um.
Commissioner.
The appeal.
Commissioner Getzelt?
Deny.
Commissioner Creaker?
Deny.
Commissioner Ramadi?
Deny.
Commissioner Wood?
Will we clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I use?
So, this is the resolution number twenty-four, so accepting the res. I.
If I understand the motion was to adopt the draft, right, you're just.
Yeah, so when your call for it are favored, then you can say hi.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wood?
Hi.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Hi.
Commissioner Peney?
Hi.
Hi.
Chairman Hayward.
So, um. You can appeal this decision to the city council. Um. But as it stands right now, um, you can reapply, but you have to wait a year. And for specifics on that, you would have to, you would speak with, uh, staff. Could we go? Okay, thank you all for that, um. Okay, uh, we have no, nothing further to hear, uh, in the outcomes, my commissioners, Commissioner Getzel.
Um, I don't know, the, I think it was mentioned at, at the city council meeting recently, but. Just wanted everybody to be aware of that, the Yokes. Have been certified as a fire-wise community for about the last six months. And took a lot of effort by Matt, our maintenance man, and others. Uh, to get it certification, and it's not an easy process, and it's an ongoing process, whereas much. It's outdated, it's replaced with, uh, D G. Keep our trees primed on a regular basis. And hopefully that will help us resolve some insurance costs. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure if the city has, can become a fire-wise city, or a neighborhood can become a fire-wise city, but I really do. Uh, recommend that people look into that program. In this, uh, through the regional fire, the fire, regional fire district. Not, not seaside, but the fire district, we call it, not fire. No, lockdown fire, well, yeah, fires are on it, but, but it's, uh. This regional fire district that we're actually, you'll get your tax bill, you're paying for them too. But yeah, I mean, I'm proud of, of that the Yokes have had a, a fire in this community.
Commissioner Creaker?
The, uh, Santa beyond the park on December seventh. At eleven, or two, noon to two, so if you want to see Santa, down the park. The seventh, Saturday, yeah, sorry, the seventh, so, come on then.
We just want to recognize our veterans during this week of Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Penney?
You don't have a D G, you drive.
Very nice statement. Well, put that together, it's a very nice one. And another comment, I don't know if it would help the city out. If, uh, when, that we could amend our short-term, three-day rental hostel or whatever. The families only get one permit for one of them, they can't have multiple, but that may be a bit easier on the city. That we have one permit, rather than, you know, I'm renting it out as this and that, and this and that.
I'm not sure what your question is.
Is any short-term rental, is it a long?
Well, well, yeah, the advertising is a thirty-day. Uh, see, you can. There was a hostel.
Right.
Would it make it easier on the staff to, you only get one permit, you can't advertise it as multiple things? That was my question. And I don't know what that needs to go to council or whatever. It's a long process.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, um, it, it's a, it's a work in progress, our, our program, it seems. Still relatively new, you know, six years, um, and several of those were in lockdown, so, and pandemic, so. Uh, there, there's a lot we can change, and actually, since the T O T passed, the T O T increase passed, and we'll have some additional revenue. Uh, the, the intent of that was to use that revenue for those type of things, to bring in a partner. Uh, to help us, please help us look for people renting short-term rentals without a license. Manage the license program, maybe to help us with our business licenses as well, but then also look at our, next little tweak in. Better management stra, structures, strategy, so, yeah, so stay tuned next year. Right, you're with. Um, okay, um. Yeah, please be careful, rather than through our instructions now.
Yeah. That's giving.
Yeah, and, uh. Please, turn.